Mr. Sanyang, yesterday we started talking about the allowances and salaries that are paid to council members as well as council staff.
Yes.
Now, at your ministry, you maintain files for staff salaries and staff allowances for area councils.
Yes.
Is that correct? Let me show you this area council staff salaries file. Please identify the file.
The file is named "Area Council Staff Salaries" with reference number LM9-209-01.
And it is your ministry's file?
Exactly.
Chairperson, I apply to tender the file that has been identified by the witness.
Very well, counsel. The area council's staff salaries file with file number LM9-209-01 is hereby admitted in evidence and marked as LCG16.
As the commission, please. Mr. Sanyang, please refer to Folio 90 of that file.
Yes.
Can you identify that document, please?
Approve... There is a letter from the ministry addressed to all the councils dated 18th July 2019, approved salaries and allowances increments for CEOs
and...
with Folio number 90.
Could you also refer to Folio 18... sorry, 89? And identify that document?
That is approval salaries and allowances increments for six LGAs dated 16 July 2019, addressed to all the councils with Folio 89.
So one of Folio 89 is approved salaries and allowances for six LGAs and 90 is for the CEOs. Is that right?
Exactly.
Okay. And in respect of Folio 89, you have only included six of the local government authorities.
Exactly.
Why is that?
Yes, because the other councils like Banjung and KMC, their CEO salaries have already gone beyond the limit as per the level of the other CEOs. So if we have to regularize, we only adjust the allowances, the required allowance as per the Act. That is what we brought in to adjust their allowances. There were some allowances which were not paid to CEOs. So we just ask for the requirement of the Act. We just bring all those allowances that is an entitlement of a CEO to be inputted. But then the Banjung and KMC, their basic is even way beyond that. So that one, if we want to regularize, means we have to bring them down, which is not the best practice. So that's why we omit them, together with their chairpersons, mayors, so that we look into that separately.
Very well. From this document, the chairman's basic salary is $10,000.
Yes.
And responsibility allowance is $6,000.
Yes.
Telephone allowance, $2,000.
Yes.
The chairman does not receive car, transport or trekking allowance.
Yes.
And then no region or ward allowance.
Yes.
And then the gross pay is $18,000.
Yes.
The deputy chairman's gross pay is $9,500.
Yes, exactly.
The councillors receive a basic salary of $4,000.
Yes.
No responsibility or telephone allowances.
Yes.
Car, transport, trekking allowances is $1,500.
Yes.
And region or ward allowances is $1,000.
Yes.
So his... the councillor's gross pay is $6,500.
Yes.
The CEOs receive a basic salary of $13,500.
Yes.
Responsibility allowance of $3,000.
Exactly.
Telephone allowance, $1,000.
Yes.
No car, transport, trekking allowance, no region, ward allowance and a gross pay of $17,500.
Exactly.
Then there are further allowances in respect of officers that have bachelor's degrees and master's degrees depending on their grades.
Exactly.
The highest allowance for this is $3,122 and 53 butos.
Yes.
So is this the take home for these officials that have been listed?
Yeah, this is the basic salary with the allowances as per the care that they occupy. Because the reason why this has been applied is because some of the allowances we found being implemented were not as per the Act and some of them, they were not even given. So we went through what is obtained and then bring all those allowances out to say if you are at the position of a CEO, this is what the Act provides for your basic salary and these are the allowances that you are entitled to because you are given a car, you don't have an entitled car allowance. We have seen instances where CEOs have cars and they are given car allowance as well. So these are the things that we clean up and then bring in the actual allowances as per the Act.
Yes, but what I wanted to know was, is this the actual amount that they go home with every month?
This is the... yeah, that's the actual amount. But then most of them have got some degrees which have added their allowances. But then this is... apart from that, this is the basic.
Very well. Let me show you the area council staff allowance file. Please identify that file.
It's area council staff allowance.
And the reference?
Reference LM9194... ...194-01, Part 2.
Thank you. Chairperson, I apply to tender the file that has been identified by the witness.
Very well, counsel. The area council staff allowances file with file number LM9194-01, Part 2, is hereby admitted in evidence and marked LCG17.
As the commission, please. Mr. Sanyang, please refer to Folio 90 of that file.
90.
Yes, 90. Thank you.
Yes.
Kindly identify the document.
It's a letter from Brekama Area Council addressed to the Permanent Secretary requesting for approval on payment on allowance to councillors dated 28 January 2020,
Thank you. And in that letter, Brekama Area Council was requesting $4,000 transport refund to its councillors to attend council committee meetings.
Exactly.
And that request was approved, I believe?
If we look at the minute, I minuted to the responsible officer. I said, "Please verify if this is in line with the Act."
Very well. And is that... Is the transport allowance that had previously been allocated to councillors from the document that you had read, we had gone through earlier, does that not cover the transport allowances to go to meetings?
It depends. Councillors can request based on facts on the ground whether the transport allowance is sufficient or not or any other allowance is sufficient or not. And once they find out that this is not sufficient, they can seek for minister's approval for such requests. So the minister will look into it and then align it with the Act. And if it is in line, then it will be approved.
Mr. Kamara, can I please borrow the file? Please refer to Folio 93, which I believe came after the request for transport allowance, but within the same period.
Yes.
Now Folio 93 is requesting or is talking about the fact that they cannot have actual physical meetings due to COVID and that there would be virtual meetings.
Yes.
So do you know whether the transport allowance for $4,000 was actually approved? Could you check the file to confirm whether it was approved or not?
The $4,000? I believe it must have been approved.
It was approved. Now, in line with the fact that they could not have virtual... They could not have physical meetings.
Yes.
How does the transport allowance increment align with that?
Yes, the transport allowance increment is coming at the early stage. This was, I think, 2019. And that is... I don't...
No, this particular $4,001 was in 2020. I believe two months before...
Up to 2020, early stage, people were still having meetings. It was not all closed. COVID came at the later end of 2019, 2020, and then lockdown came, some part. But then during the COVID period, approval of allowance does not necessarily mean that when you don't sit, you have to be paid. So it is when the approval is given and the councillors cannot meet. If it is monthly, they have to be paid. Just like myself, if I am given a transport allowance and I did not go to work, I am on leave, I'm still paid the transport allowance. So these are entitlements given to people, you know, and even when those actual activities are not carried out, when it is monthly, they have to be paid because sometimes they will spend more than what you approve. But sometimes also they will spend less than what you approve. So it is an entitlement. Once it's approved, it has to be honor.
Thank you. Do councillors get vehicles as part of their packages?
Vehicle, you mean?
Yes.
No.
So please refer to Folio 94. And...
Yes.
Identify the document, please.
This is an internal memo to the CEO. It doesn't go to reference. We were copied in it. That is 6th July 2020.
And it is a complaint essentially that the vice chairman, one is Male Jalloh, who doubles as ward councillor for Super Ward, is receiving monthly transport allowance while he's also been allocated an official vehicle?
Yes.
That's why I'm asking whether they get official vehicles?
Not... this one is both a vice chairperson and also a ward councillor. So as a vice chairman, if they have enough vehicle, they will allocate a vehicle, official vehicle, to a vice chairman. Like the chairperson is allocated a vehicle. Then the vice chairman will also be facilitated with transportation and then the transport allowance will be withdrawn. But this was an internal complaint within the council itself. They are bringing it to the attention of their management. But they copied us to be aware of it in case it escalates to our level.
Okay. Thank you very much. Going back to, just briefly, the Local Government Service Commission. Hold on, sorry. It is the minister who determines the allowances paid to the Local Government Service Commission.
Exactly.
Now, how do you... Or how does the ministry determine what is sufficient as allowances for the commissioners?
We look at the best practice, what obtained in other commissions, similar commissions or bodies of similar powers or responsibilities. And we also adjust them or whatever, pay it to those bodies.
And do you know what body or commission was used as a comparison for this Local Government Service Commission?
Yeah, we have an internal body like the Land Commission. We have the Planning Board. We have the planning authorities. We have those ones existing with us. We have the NGO Affairs Board. So these are structures under us which have similar function as the Local Government Service Commission.
So you've mentioned the Land Commission. How often do they sit?
Land Commission, they were sitting very often at one time when they were active. At the moment, their term expired and we are working on constituting a new commission. The problem is the Act provides for a judge of a high, a superior court to be a chairperson. And we are finding it difficult to get this. And that is a provision of an Act. We cannot just put anybody there as the chairperson. So this has proven a bit challenging. But we are working with judiciary to see how we can overcome that hurdle to have a functional Land Commission as soon as possible.
Very well. But when they did sit, can you give us an idea of how many times in a quarter or in a month they sat?
There was a time they were sitting every week because they were receiving complaints. People were submitting complaints to them and they were sitting almost on weekly basis. I remember that.
Now, you had indicated that the Local Government Service Commission sits monthly or weekly in your previous testimony. Is that right?
Yeah, I see sometimes they sit weekly. Yeah.
Now, considering that they are responsible for all staff matters of the eight local government area councils, are you of the view... Well, I would assume that you're of the view because that's the stipulated allowances that were set down for them. But do you not think, bearing in mind their responsibilities, that the allowances that have been allocated to them are not suitable?
Are not... oh?
Not suitable. Let me just read out what the allowances are. So the chairperson is allocated an allowance of $15,000 per month. And all the commissioners, including the vice chairperson, is allocated $10,000 per month. The secretary is allocated $5,000 per month.
Yes.
And this is the commission responsible for all staff matters of the eight area councils.
Exactly.
Do you think this is sufficient for their duties?
Yes. I think sufficient is relative here because all of us will say our salaries are not sufficient based on our need. But then based on what is the best practice within the ministry, we feel that we should give them them. However, we've also considered providing them with foil so that they can be supported with that, on top of that allowance where I think the chairman is to receive something like either five or 10,000 foil monthly and other members will receive, I think, 8,000 monthly, something like that. We also started working on that to provide them those foil support.
Thank you. Let me show you Local Government Service Commission file, Part 3. Please identify the file for the record.
Local Government Service Commission with reference LM35-131-01, Part 3.
And this is your ministry's file?
Yes.
Chairperson, I apply to tender the file identified by the witness.
Very well, counsel. The Local Government Service Commission file number LM35-131-01, Part 3, is hereby admitted in evidence and marked LCG18.
As the commission, please. Mr. Sanyang, yesterday we spoke about transfer or redeployment of staff of council and more particularly the CEOs.
Yes.
Please refer to Folio 150 of the file.
Yes.
And kindly identify the document.
This document is from Kanyin Municipal Council to the Chairman, Local Government Service Commission, reference official transfer with reference number BEW-119-243-01 in bracket 02.
Now, you had previously indicated that one of the considerations for redeploying council staff is so that they don't stay in one place too long or so that they can carry out their functions more efficiently at a different council.
Yes.
Now, in this case, Kanyin Municipal Council is complaining that the staff that is being transferred has not been with the council for up to a year and has not settled well in its position yet and is now being transferred and there's been no consultation with the council. Can you give us an idea of what informed the decision to transfer someone who has not been with a council for up to a year?
Yes, just as I explained, for efficiency of service, in this particular instance, there was an issue at Banjung City Council regarding the deputy CEO with the mayor. And this problem has escalated to a point that we feel that we need to just request for the council to look into it by swapping them so that their sanity and work can progress. In fact, it led to the lady to resign from the council because she could not cope with the situation. She was being somehow... I wouldn't want to use the word bully, but she could not cope and she had to leave. But this was a remedial situation where we see a problem that the management and the council have not been pulling well. And then this is affecting work. Now you have to look for a possible solution. And this is how it has been recommended to the commission to look for a possibility of bringing somebody to Banjung and then letting that woman who has got the potential to move to another council where she could perform her duties. That was the reason background.
Thank you. Can I please get the file? You have an area council... You have an area council complaints and petitions file at your ministry?
Yes.
Let me show you the complaints and petitions file. Is that the file from your ministry?
Yes.
Could you please identify it?
The file is named Area Council Complaint and Petition with file reference LM thirty-nine, sorry, LM nine stroke forty-one stroke zero one.
Chairperson, apply to tender the file that has been identified by the witness.
Very well, council. The area council complaints and petition file with file number LM nine stroke four one stroke zero one is hereby admitted in evidence and marked LCG nineteen.
Let the commission face this. Mr. Sanyang, this is the file where you keep general petitions and complaints made to your office, is that correct?
Yes.
Can you refer to Folio one fifty?
One?
One five zero.
Very well. Yes.
Can you identify the document, please?
It's a letter from Janjang Bre Area Council, dated twenty-seven January two thousand and twenty-three, reference number JAC stroke zero two three stroke ADM stroke JAC stroke thirty-nine.
Thank you. Oh, sorry, go ahead.
Title Removal of the Vice Chairperson of Janjang Bre Area Council.
So in this document, you're being informed that the Janjang Bre Area Council has removed their, sorry, their vice chairman. And they also stated that they have appointed a new vice chairman.
Yes.
The document was submitted to the DLG that let's discuss urgently.
Yes.
Could you please tell us what transpired after you received that letter?
This is for our information, it's not for our action. Council within themselves, councillors, when they sit, they appoint the vice chairperson. And if there is an issue around the vice chairman, vice chairman, they can remove the vice chairman based on their resolution or their voting and then appoint a new one and notify us accordingly. This particular instance is when the, I think it was a longstanding issue when the chairman of the council was sick and was not going to the office. And the vice chairman brought this to the attention of the office, that the chairman has not been coming to the office. And then we advised him that as per the act, they should act, not the ministry. The act indicated that if the chairman is not fit, they should take the act, action by either deposit him, going through the due process. The due process would include after their action, we will send this request to the Office of the Attorney General for them to assess whether what has been alleged is what obtained. And this will, that's part of the process. But then the vice chairman only stopped at a resolution from the council to depose. And then he want to resume office. And we advised that we cannot just give you that power because it doesn't lie with us. So that was going on, on and on, until the chairman resumed office back. And when he resumed office, he called up a council meeting. And during that council meeting, they decided to remove the vice chairman. And then they notify us after, and that is the power. For vice chairman, it doesn't need to go further. But for the chairman, it needs to go further for verification. But the vice chairman, they can remove him with the majority vote, given their reason, and they can now appoint another person as the vice chairman and copy the relevant stakeholders accordingly.
Please refer to Folio one forty-four.
Yes.
Identify the document, please.
The document is from Janjang Bre Area Council to the Permanent Secretary, Ministry of Finance, Ministry Intervention in Need in this Situation. And the reference is O stroke A stroke Chairman stroke JAC stroke eleven stroke one stroke two thousand and twenty-three, dated eleventh January two thousand and twenty-three.
Thank you. Now, in that document, they're stating that the chairman of the Janjang Bre Area Council was removed and that the resolution was approved by your ministry on the fourth of April two thousand and twenty-two. Is that correct?
That's why I said the resolution, we don't approve resolutions. Resolutions are made at the council and approved at the council. They are sent to us for our information that they have taken a resolution. And we acknowledge receipt of their resolution. And then based on the fact that the chairman have not been coming to the office and there is a vacuum. Based on that, on administrative means, the vice chairman was asked to oversee whilst the due process follows. That was our role, for administrative purpose, to allow the office to be functional. We asked the vice chairman to oversee whilst they continue from where they stopped the resolution to go through the next process to have the vice chairman removed officially.
So you're saying you didn't actually approve the resolution? That as per what they are saying in the letter?
Yes, resolution is not our responsibility to approve.
Okay. So you have said that you asked them to have the vice chairman oversee pending the completion of the process of removal of the chairman?
Exactly.
So can you tell us what happened in respect of the completion of the process to remove the chairman?
The vice chairman refused to activate that process. In fact, that is what gave the chairman, when he came back, to make a counter coup and remove him.
When you say the vice chairman refused to activate that process, what exactly do you mean?
He was supposed to forward the process to us, for us to send it to the Attorney Judiciary for a review. And then the review of whatever allegation has been leveled, whether that is in line with the conditions for the removal. And also to confirm if it is maybe the person has instability of mind or is sick, whether there is a medical paper proving that he cannot perform. And that's why it's been removed. All those has to be assessed by forming a committee at that level. Once those are confirmed, then it will be sent back to them to say that they have confirmed that what has been alleged is right. They can proceed and then that removal will become official.
So did they send you the resolution for the removal of the chairperson and the vice chairperson? Did they send it to your ministry?
Yeah, they inform us about their resolution.
Now, are you conversant with the provisions as to removal of chairperson and councillors under the Local Government Act?
Yes, I don't extend yes.
Okay. So with the permission of the commission, I'll just read the provision. And it's section twenty. Now, section twenty says, removal of chairperson, et cetera, from office. Subject to subsection two, a chairperson, deputy chairperson or other member of a council may be removed from office by a resolution supported by two-thirds of all the members of the council on any of the following grounds. A, abuse of office. B, corruption. C, misconduct. Or D, such physical or mental incapacity as would render him or her incapable of discharging the duties of the office. For the purpose of removing the chairperson, deputy chairperson or other member of a council under subsection one of this section, a notice in writing signed by not less than two-thirds of all members of the council shall be submitted to the deputy chairperson in the case of the removal of a chairperson and to the chairperson in the case of the removal of a deputy chairperson or any other member of the council, stating that they intend to pass a resolution to remove the chairperson, deputy chairperson or other member of the council, as the case may be, on the grounds set out in subsection one. And it should set out, in the case of removal under subsection one, other than paragraph D, the particulars of the charge supported by necessary documents were applicable, on which it is claimed that the conduct of the chairperson, deputy chairperson or other member of the council, as the case may be, be investigated for the purpose of removal. And the chairperson or deputy chairperson shall, within twenty-four hours after receipt of the notice, cause a copy of the notice to be transmitted to the minister. Now, you have confirmed that they sent you the resolution and there's a letter forwarding the resolution, I believe, informing you of their decision to remove the chairperson in one case and the deputy chairperson, right?
Exactly.
Okay, so subsection four of section twenty says, the minister shall, on receiving the notice under subsection three or following any finding of irregularity that concerns any action of or omission by the chairperson, deputy chairperson or other member of the council, by a commission of inquiry instituted on the section one five one of this act, A, suspend the chairperson, deputy chairperson or other member of the council concerned, in which case, the deputy chairperson shall act as chairperson. And a councillor appointed by the members of the council from among the elected councillors shall act as deputy chairperson. B, shall investigate the allegations contained in the notice. And C, report its findings to the president, stating whether or not there is a case for the removal of the chairperson, deputy chairperson or other member of the council involved. Now, that provision states what your ministry's duty is when such a complaint or rather such a notice and resolution has been forwarded to your office.
Yes.
So did you conduct an investigation based on those resolutions?
No, the resolution, after the resolution is passed, the council should give a notice through the chairman or the vice chairman indicating their intention after they've agreed on the resolution. And when this is passed to the ministry officially, then the ministry will follow the due process.
Are you saying that they did not notify you of the fact that they intended to pass a resolution or of the fact that they passed a resolution to that effect?
Yeah, the resolution, we were notified.
You were notified?
Yes.
So you're saying that unless they send you a notice, that, so what form is this notice supposed to take?
As per the act, it indicates that, if I could remember well, after the resolution, the councillors or the vice chairman is, in case of the chairman, should put up a notice that should be acted on by the council and then sent to the ministry.
You will agree that notice simply means that you need to be notified of whatever it is that is required to be transmitted to you?
Yeah, that is also a notice.
Yes, so they have notified you of the resolution. Now, has your ministry taken any steps following the notification to look into the contents of the resolutions?
Not beyond the ministry.
Now, subsection five of section twenty reads, the chairperson, deputy chairperson or other member of the council who is to be removed from office may, within thirty days of his or her suspension from office under subsection four, make representations to the president. Six goes on. If the president determines that there is a prima facie case for the removal of the chairperson, deputy chairperson or other person or other member of the council, as the case may be, under subsection one, other than on the paragraph D, the chairperson, deputy chairperson or other member of the council, as the case may be, shall cease to hold office. Now, this provision is making it clear that it is the president upon a finding of a prima facie case following the ministry's intervention after being served with the resolution. If the president finds that there's a prima facie case for the removal of the chairperson, then he will remove the chairperson or the deputy chairperson or councillor, as the case may be.
Yes, as per what you refer.
So unless the ministry actually follows through when they've been notified of the resolution and conducts an investigation in accordance with the act and makes a report to the president, the president cannot remove the chairperson, deputy chairperson or other councillor, as the case may be.
Yes.
So even though the council has the power to make the resolution, unless the president removes the person, he is not removed from office.
Exactly.
So do you see where the lapse in your ministry's taking action may have consequences on the council's resolution?
Yes.
Thank you. Now, Folio one forty-four, I believe. But more generally, the Janjang Bre Area Council sought to remove their chairperson on the grounds of mental or physical incapacity.
Yes.
Now, was that ever looked into?
Yeah, for the mental incapacity of a person, it also require a process. I cannot recall the actual process, but then there are steps that needs to be followed to make sure that that is confirmed, that the person is not able to perform his or her duty based on whatever mental incapacitation that he has.
All right, let me assist you. And with the commission's permission, I'll read section twenty subsection eight of the Local Government Act. And it says, in the case of removal, under paragraph D, paragraph D is such physical or mental incapacity as would render him or her incapable of discharging the duties of the office. So in the case of removal under that section, the minister, which is your minister, shall, within seven days after the receipt of the notice transmitted on the subsection three and in consultation with the Director of Medical Services, constitute a medical board comprising three qualified medical specialists to examine the chairperson, deputy chairperson or other member of the council. as the case may be, in respect of the alleged incapacity, and report its findings to the council." "The medical board shall examine the chairperson, deputy chairperson, or other member of the council, as the case may be, within fourteen days after it is constituted." "The chairperson, deputy chairperson, or other member of the council, as the case may be, shall submit himself or herself to the medical board for examination on the day that and time determined by the board." "The chairperson, deputy chairperson, or other member of the council, as the case may be, shall cease to hold office if the medical board, A, determines that the chairperson, deputy chairperson, or other member of the council, as the case may be, is by reason of physical or mental incapacity unable to perform the functions of his or her office; or B, reports that the chairperson, deputy chairperson, or other member of the council, as the case may be, has failed or refused to submit himself or herself to the medical board for examination." Now, you have stated that no action was taken after receiving the resolution.
Exactly.
And no medical board was constituted.
Exactly.
Now, twelve says, and I read with the permission of the commission, "Failure by the chairperson or deputy chairperson to convene a meeting of the council within fourteen days of the receipt of the medical board, or by the council to move the resolution for the removal of the chairperson, deputy chairperson, or other member of the council, as the case may be, within fourteen days after the receipt of such report, shall render the resolution time barred, provided that where the chairperson or deputy chairperson fails to convene a meeting of the council, a meeting may be convened by two-thirds majority of the members of the council." Now, inasmuch as the council has the powers to remove or to pass a resolution to remove their chairperson, deputy chairperson, or other council member, it's, this power is not giving effect until your ministry actually takes the steps as provided for in the act.
Exactly.
And you also appreciate the fact that where your ministry has not taken steps as provided for in the act, it leaves the councils in a state of chaos and confusion. And that is why you have the issues that are prevailing with, as you called it, the coup d'etat by the vice-chair and the chair.
Exactly.
Thank you. I will now refer you to my colleague who has some questions for you.
Okay.
Sorry, unless the commissioners have questions first?
Yes, may I? In which of the councils did you find this thing happening?
Probably at Brickama, where the deputy chairperson was actually given in an official car by the council. At the same time, they were paying him a car allowance. So, when this was brought to our attention, we asked them to either choose to leave the car with him, which is a privilege, but then he has to, if he's above called it that privilege, he has to forego the car allowance, sorry, the allowance. Oh yeah, the car allowance that has been given to him in monetary terms, or otherwise. With that privilege, he has to forego the car allowance, sorry, the allowance, oh yeah, the car allowance that has been given to him in monetary terms, or otherwise. These two councils have got already their councillors or deputy mayor or the mayor way above this threshold. And at the time, we said we need to get a proper all those such issues to the Local Government Service Commission for redress. So, any of that. The ministry has an oversight function, is to enforce the powers under the act given to the ministry on the activities of the councils. So, the ministry is to enforce the powers given to the ministry under the act and by guiding the council, yes. It's the enforcement of the powers.
Thank you.
Commissioner Ajayna wants to ask questions, please.
Thank you, Madam Chairperson. It is interesting to note that the ministry is the enforcement agency of the act. We have seen from your deliberations, it seems as if enforcement was a problem. Why do you think enforcement was a problem for your ministry to enforce certain requirements of the act?
Yes, enforcement, to an extent, I'll agree, has been a challenge. This is because sometimes these laws to be enforced have, some people see them as a political witch hunt. But then, that is not an excuse for enforcing a law. The ministry, under the provisions of powers given to it, should make sure they are enforced to the latter. That is just the case, and that should be the case.
So, in other words, the ministry should or can be blamed for non-enforcement of certain provisions of the act?
Yeah, definitely, at some point, the ministry does not enforce as required, that's true.
So, in essence, you are saying you have a mouth which is toothless?
No, 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 it doesn't mean that.
Okay, what does it mean?
It might not be biting at all the time, but it has its powers that it enforce.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other? You can proceed, councillor.
Hello? Yes, at some point, I thought we will be going for a tea break, but it seems as if there's much energy in the room today. Very well, that's fine, that's all right. So, however, PS, we will now discuss perhaps some issues raised by the various audit reports prepared by the auditor general. To be more specific, we will deal briefly with the issues raised by the audit report in relation to Kellawan Area Council and also BCC, and also Brickama Area Council, just to have a general overview of some of the problems that have been highlighted, and then discuss them in detail as to the role your ministry is playing in relation to addressing those issues. So, we start with the audit report dated the twenty-eighth April two thousand and twenty-one for Kellawan Area Council for the years ended thirty-first December two thousand and eighteen and two thousand and nineteen. So, if you turn to page, if I, if I go to page fourteen, which I will read for you, since you don't have the document, the auditor highlighted some key findings, one of which is on the page fourteen, that examination of sample expenditure vouchers against the cashbook reveals salary preparation without payment vouchers, that salaries are paid using the salary schedule only. And the implication that the auditor highlighted is that payments made without using or raising payment vouchers can lead to unauthorized payments being processed without being detected. And so, this, of course, you would agree, it is a recipe for fraud. What is your reaction to that?
Yes, all these reports and queries are meant for the council executive. One, the CEO as an administrative head to address, and the oversight body, as the council itself headed by either the mayor or the chairperson, should make sure that these audit reports findings on their council are taken care of. However, in the absence of all these bodies failing to act, the ministry should now act by bringing it first to their attention, and if need be, they should do other, bring in other bodies like police investigation or any other body to help address the issue. But the primary duty bearer of the audit report is the CEO and the council as a body.
Yes, I mean, these findings, the reason why we are asking you these questions is in relation to your inspection role, or better still, your supervisory role as a ministry, since you've highlighted over and over again that you perform an oversight function over these, over these area councils, is that not correct?
Yes.
And then, so, informants of those area oversight functions, you of course have the right to enter into area council premises, demand account books, record books, and so on and so forth, to be able to perform your duties very well.
Exactly.
Yes, and so, the audit report will of course come in handy in trying to do a thorough job in relation to pointed out some of these malpractices that may be happening on a daily basis or so in these area councils.
Yes.
Yeah, very well, so now I, now again, now I will refer to page seventeen of the same audit report wherein the auditor highlighted that the following tables, which is already drawn on the document, relates to sample market tickets amounted to three hundred and eighteen thousand, seven hundred and thirty-four dollarses, which were issued to collectors but could not be traced in their individual cashbooks.
Exactly.
Yes, so, were you aware of these findings at any time?
After it is reported by the auditors.
Very well, so, what was your reaction as an oversight institution?
As I said, these are operational matters. Operational, we do conduct inspection on the council, see how they are, the staff considering the manpower, the procurement process, and some of the day-to-day activities, but we cannot detect all this. That's the reason why we have the national audit, auditing the councils, to come up with deeper findings on operations. Our role is to look at, strengthening the system, helping the system to function. But then, the audit report, or the audit exercise will go deeper to look into this. And once they are detected, they are brought to the attention of the CEO that your tickets are maybe, seem to be maybe fraudulent in terms of how people use them. So, it's now the CEO to look into this matter, as the first contact person to look into this matter, to see those actions. If the CEO feels, it is the council's responsibility to make sure that these findings which have been brought to them is being acted on. It is only after those failures that the ministry will look into some of these things. But we have to make sure that we give those structures the opportunity, because they are the actors of these particular actions, and they can, we believe they should be able to address these problems at their level. However, it doesn't stop us from intervening if there is a need.
Now, I agree with you entirely with respect to the process you have highlighted as to giving the chance to the CEO or the council to address these issues. Now, we will come to that when perhaps they are before us as well to give evidence as to some of these issues. But now, as an oversight function, we want to know, as an in performance of your inspection role, whether you have addressed these issues, whether you know whether they have been addressed by the councils, the result as of now, since they have been raised vertically by the auditor.
Yeah, I quite remember that I instructed the governance unit to extract all the findings of all the councils and send it to the CEO, reminding them of the findings that has been made in the audit reports, so that they can actually, I quite remember that.
Do you know whether that was done by the director of governance?
I believe so, I believe so, I can confirm that.
Yes, if you were asked to provide a copy of your instruction to the director of governance, and as well whether any administrative position has been taken, will you be able to do that?
Yes.
Very well, we will request those correspondences. Again, just to conclude on the same audit report in relation to Kellawan, I will also as well highlight an issue raised by the auditor. One of the issues is the payment without having the right people to sign off those payments.
Come again?
You have payments being done without having the right authority to sign off those payments. So you can trace as to the reason for those payments or the accounting records in relation to those payments as well. And the auditor has highlighted that it's a very high risk, which perhaps as well is a recipe for fraud, is my language.
Come again?
Which is a recipe for fraud, when you have payments being made to individuals and there are no records to show for it, even signatures to indicate those payments. Are you aware of this?
Yeah, as per the audit, yes.
Now, we move to BCC. In fact, some of these issues that are being raised before you today, you realize, you agree with me, they are much more similar issues across the board.
Exactly.
For the most part of it.
Most, yes.
So with respect to BCC, I will turn to page 17. It is the audit report dated the 26th of October 2022, for the period 1st January 2020 to 31st December 2021. Now I will turn to page 17. If you look at page 17, you will see in 2019, with respect to the office of the chairman, the salary was increased from 60,000 to 2020 to 121,849 dalasies 96 per toots. Were you aware of these increments, since there are rules or procedures surrounding increment of salaries?
No.
Did you not have records of this audit as at the time, because it has been prepared since 2022?
Are you talking of my prior being aware of it before it was done or after the audit?
No, at any time.
Yeah, after the audit, yes.
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 So did you follow up as to see whether it followed the regulation in relation to increment of salaries?
Whether the regulation?
Did you follow up to see whether it has followed the guidelines or the regulation or any law laid down as to how salaries can be increased?
Yeah, that's what I said. These things were extracted and then they were flagged to the various councils. I think it must have fallen within that period.
Yes, so basically, since they were also flagged and were sent to the various councils for comments, did you receive any comments or any explanations to that effect?
No.
Very well. Again, we will now address, go to page 20 of the Bilkama Area Council, or let's say page 31. So the auditor has also clearly outlined that during the process of auditing, there were unprecedented deposit slips, in fact, in various instances. I'm not sure whether you are aware of those.
Yeah, sure.
Yes, it is. Yeah, so what can you tell us about that?
Yeah, equally, as I said, at our some of visionary level, we will look into this, but then the primary jury bearer is the CEO to make sure that to contain and then protect his revenue, these issues are immediately addressed. And the council as a body, oversighting body of the administration, should also make sure that these issues are immediately addressed, because there are serious frauds that will affect their revenue and their operations.
That's true, but this is since 2022.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. That's, we should ask them, why didn't they act? Did you do that? I said, that is what we should find out. I, as I said earlier on, the 2022 audit report, I don't know when was it received, but it was not received immediately 2022. These audit reports normally come a year after. I don't know whether it was recently received. It was the 2022 audit or it was received in 2022?
I'm not sure when it was received, but it is dated 26th of October 2022. I also perhaps believe that it has been received around the same time.
Yeah, that might be the latest audit reports that we received last year, end of last year, which the unit is working with the audit committee to see, to address this. And when the audit, when the commission came into force, they requested for these documents. So some of it by unit city council, for one, the audit report, part of the audit report, and the complaints made by about 17 councillors were forwarded again to the national audit for a review. This was done within the same period for them to review, to look at substantiate, where we received not long ago that some of those complaints made by those councillors have been contained in the audit report. This was just a recent engagement, and this one must have been received at the office very recently.
Very well. So you can have a look at the audit report I made reference to in relation to Bilkama Area Council.
Yes.
Can you identify that audit report?
This is an audit report. I don't know whether it was directly delivered to you or through our office, because I would have received, everyone has seen my stamp on it, but I have not seen that on this.
Very well. Can we have a back? Now, let's discuss some of the issues raised by the auditor with respect to BCC for the year ended 31st December 2019 and 2020. I will just highlight some very fundamental issues raised by the auditor. First, page 7 of the report itself. So first, the auditor highlighted as well that there were unprecedented GTRs for audit inspection, basically. And so this generally, the auditor highlighted will pose a serious high risk of either fraud itself, and so that is a concern. I'm not sure whether you are aware of that.
Yes.
So do you know whether the audit report in relation to Bilkama BCC the year 2019 and 2020 was ever reacted upon by your office?
Yeah, I think should be part of the 2019 period was the part when we asked for the extraction of all the queries and then forwarding of those queries to the councils, that was around the period.
How about the issue of fraud, suspected fraud being also highlighted by the auditor?
Yes.
What can you tell us about the information you had in relation to the issues of suspected fraud?
Yes, I may not recall the exact figure, but then suspected frauds in terms of people paying and underlodging the amount to the accounts, and also people understating the amount on the receipts. But these are common occurrence at the councils, which tend amounts to fraud.
Yes, so in your role as an inspector, so since these informations came to your knowledge, what have you done about it?
Yes, the last inspection done by the Inspectorate Unit, they were asked to look at some of these findings and to find out whether the councils have actually acted on some of them. So they were, as part of their inspection, they were also to see in terms of compliance for the audit queries.
All right, so you will agree that the issue of suspected fraud is a very serious issue?
Exactly.
Were there any possible inquiries have been set up in relation to that?
Not by the ministry.
How about police reports?
No, not by the ministry.
Any possible future additions being discussed at this level?
Yes, as when we set up the ministerial committee, sorry, commission back in 2021, we wanted all these audit reports to be looked at by the investigators and then recommendations can be made for possible police action. But when the commission did not go through, and then we were trying to address some of the problems, we feel that some of these things will be competently dealt with at a commission level where issues of this nature, especially fraud, will be looked into. However, it will be a non-action of the ministry, I will admit that, for not taking some of these further steps that you mentioned by submitting some of these serious frauds to the police, just as we did for the last audit query for Basa Area Council.
Yes, because just to dwell in further with respect to the suspected fraud as highlighted by the auditor, it was noted that confirmed GTRs were with serial number 806101, 806550, recorded in the market CRBR, that these were not part of the books supplied by the Gamma Printing and Publishing Corporation. So we could not verify the source and the quantities of the books received therein. And as well, there was a suppression of collections of 195,000 dalasies as well, all in these fraudulent schemes, I may call it. So my point is, you have an oversight function, these things are being raised. It has come to your notice. It doesn't have to come to your notice at the earliest possible stage, but it has come to your notice during the process of auditing, and you possibly have had access to these documents. So this is 2020, we are in 2023. Don't you think if there are no actions taken to address these fundamental issues, this will cause grave financial mishap to these area councils and in effect as for the country?
Exactly, I do agree.
Yes, so...
Even though...
Go, please proceed.
Yeah, even though we as a RAS result must have to look into this matter and then revert them to the relevant, for relevant redress, this has not been done by this ministry until recently, when we started sending the audit reports for police investigation.
Now, the issue again of the aggregation of procurement, what do you know about that?
Yeah, procurements are areas where easily people can hide behind cost of items, inflate costs, or not follow due process. This is the normal queries around procurement.
Were you aware of any incident that happened with respect to BCC?
BCC, I cannot recall, but then I remember the procurement officer did query some procurement procedures in the EU project that the council was executing. And in fact, this resulted, the council moving the procurement officer to become, I don't know whether a raid collector, because she tried to uncover issues. They decided to deploy her, and we brought this to the service commission's attention, that the councils cannot do that. I would have to agree that most of these audit reports that you are talking about, the ministry, beyond the advisory and administrative role, we have not gone further. And I remember you've seen on the media, where a mayor, to be specific, came, indicated that a telephone that was bought for him costing 40,000 was actually said to be bought 80,000. And what was the remedial action he has taken? It's to transfer the stuff. So inasmuch as ministry have an oversight function, that we cannot throw that responsibility to the councils. When the crouch gets tough, we need to act. But the body that we are helping also to act, I believe, when obvious issues are brought to their attention, they should act on them.
My point is, and again, you can disagree with that assertion, is that you are not only helping them to act, you are acting for the good of the country.
Exactly.
And so you have a responsibility, which you have highlighted throughout our citizens, that you have an inspection role. And that inspection role is not just to help a particular council to act, but to make sure what needs to be done is actually done.
Exactly.
And so there are procedures, in the event certain things are not being done. For example, you know what to do if you see some very serious financial misappropriation or something of a similar sort happening in these area councils, to properly inspect, investigate where necessary, possibly serve a commission where necessary, and make sure the issues are addressed.
Exactly.
And so if you fail to do that, I mean, not you, but as an institution, it means you are opening up a fraud gate where staff or employees or council in all areas can actually engage in mass fraud and misappropriation of funds without ever having any details of any sort, is that not correct?
Yes, to an extent, the ministry as a RAS check should be doing that, and we have not been doing that efficiently, I will agree to that.
Now, I will also bring to your attention as well in relation to the aggregated issues that we were discussing with respect to procurement. The auditor also highlighted as well that the construction of an abattoir and eight stores for the year under review, that the council paid about 1,767,812 dalasies 94 per toots, and 1,814,885 dalasies 35 per toots for the construction of the abattoir and stores at the Banjul Albert Market and BCC ice plant respectively. That these payments were made to the director of planning as impressed, and we are fully retired. But then you will see that, in fact, the number one, the implication that was highlighted was that the GPPA rules or Act was not followed. was that the GPPA rules or Act was not followed. Another thing as well is that this construction was never completed. In fact, the auditor attached pictures to show you how the state of the construction. Money spent to the tune of more than almost four million or so, or there about, and there was no proper construction being done. Not even, to even use the word completion, that it was not complete would be an understatement. And I'm sure you are aware of this situation.
Yes, and if I may add to that, an impress of one million, I've never heard of that. Even in the government setup, an impress, I think doesn't go beyond fifty thousand or maybe hundred thousand, but an impress of a million and above, this has been brought to our attention and we called the director of planning to shed light on this. And also, in addition to the, these were supposed to be part of the things investigated for the previous commission. In addition to this allegation of an impress, we were told that the actual project was being sponsored by the EU project and this impress was also claimed on top of that. So we actually highlighted this and then we were to look into it with a view to make this available to the, for the proceedings of the commission. But then we called the director of planning to check with him. Asked, he said he costed this particular project and the costing was supposed to complete the project. Why was the project not completed? And this was brought to the attention of the council.
Very well.
Sorry, sorry, can I come in here? I just want him to clarify. Mr. Sanjan, can you kindly clarify, is it your evidence that the council provided funding for that project and then EU also provided funding on the same project?
That is what we were told, that the project was actually, as part of a project, being funded by EU. We could not confirm this, but that was what we were digging into. And also, these amounts were raised at the council as being for this project. I think if I could remember well, the internal auditor raised some of these issues and brought to our attention that some of these things are problems. Only for the next month, we received a letter that the internal auditor, that they have put in, is in fact not competent, is not qualified. He should now be dismissed. And they wrote to the Service Commission to that effect because of the revelation of this nature, which we refuse to adhere to because it's not proper. But then also the internal auditor, I personally asked him to authenticate his report and then send it to us so that we can act on. But I don't know whether he feared the action of the council or it was being threatened or his position was being threatened, he was afraid to actually do this. But he discussed this in my office. He came with somebody to bring, I said, I cannot act on your hearsay. You have to now, he has an internal audit that he has done in the council and brought it to the attention of the council. They refused to give their response, the queries. For the second time, he reminded them. For the third time, I said, for the third time, if you remind them, they don't act. Confirm and then authenticate your report, ask the final report and then submit it. But I can understand his position when people are saying that you are not even qualified for that post and in fact you should be demoted or dismissed. So this has gone round and in fact there was a submission for us to forward to the Service Commission, for the boy to be dismissed or demoted because he doesn't have qualification. But it's because he has raised these problems. So even though I must admit that some of the additional action that is being requested or expected by the ministry in terms of going for police report and other things has not been done by the ministry, but also the council is actually, you know, taking these things and then trying to support the people doing the wrong, against the people doing the right. So.
Yes, thank you, Pierce. But you may agree with me that actually the box stops at your office. Given the fact that he has reported this matter three times, as you have indicated in your evidence, don't you think it would have been your duty to take the appropriate action pursuant to what the law gives you as a supervisory institution?
Yes, that's why I said we have requested through the National Audit to substantiate some of these findings, as our request to them, to find out some of these things whether they are actually true. But he has not reported to me three times, but he said he has written to the management three times for them to respond to his queries and they have not. So I advise him that if you have done that three times and they have not responded, so it's your duty to confirm, validate your report as it is and then submit. Because now that your queries have not been acted on, you cannot leave it open-ended. But without you also validating your report and as a final report, I cannot also act on it. But then we have also cut on this and then it was part of the things that we wanted National Audit to verify for us.
Thank you, just to ask one question before I hand you over to council. Is it is also your evidence that BCC also, without following due process, increased their emoluments? Is that your evidence?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So just to kind of conclude on the issue regarding the aggregated construction, you will see that apparently the contract was given or the payments were made to the director of planning as impressed to one cutting today. I'm not sure whether you are aware of that.
Yes.
And cutting today, can you please clarify for the record whether he's a staff or a member of BCC?
He's the director of planning.
For BCC?
BCC, yes.
Very well. And so what is your opinion in relation to that? The payments being made to the director of planning at BCC, should he be the one to kind of manage this construction?
His role as director of planning is to look at projects of council, cost them and then tender them for due process to be followed. But then the money is not supposed to be paid to him as in passing to do any activity for council.
So paying him the money, in your opinion, was wrong?
Yes, beyond the limited impress limit. For any staff of council to be given money beyond fifty, hundred thousand maximum as an impress is wrong.
And as well, you share the same opinion with the auditor who highlighted that the practice of paying contract amounts to staff of the council should be stopped immediately by management.
Exactly.
Yes, and this of course raises so many questions, conflict of interest and as well is corrupt practices perhaps. You may have influence over certain decisions and then you're part of management in one way or the other and you now having contracts to construct as a structure.
Yes.
Yes, so again, what is your office or what will be your office's response towards these fundamental issues being raised?
Yeah, that's what I said. We've started dealing with this matter by inviting the officer himself. I had a personal discussion with him concerning this problem. He did admit that he has been given this money to do that project. But then I also put to him that we heard that this project was being sponsored by the EU funding. But then we could not confirm that, that's why we subjected to the findings. In fact, as just concluded audit at the Basay Area Council by my internal auditor, I also informed the internal audit director at the time that we will want the internal audit unit to do an internal audit again to another council just for a comparison purpose and also to look at some of the weaknesses because the one in Basay was very comprehensive and has revealed a lot of issues. In fact, that we are not captured in the previous audit. So I felt that I need to leverage on that by doing more of this on one urban council as well just to draw comparison and if possible, roll it out to all the councils and use it as a baseline for any finding of any nature. Because that audit has gone far to detect maybe that matter will become, I don't know whether it's part of your questions, where in fact we've seen collectors, revenue collectors, collecting money and paying into the director of finance's personal account. And the director of finance is using that money and loaning council and asks council to pay. You know, is this happening somewhere else when we have detected this? These are the things that we want to collaborate. But then the commission, since they have started the sitting or when the commission was constituted, we asked them to hold on until this process is completed and then we proceed with that.
Yes, that is how serious these issues raised by the auditor and which you are confirming are. And so I'm not sure how you will classify these malpractices or corrupt practices, if I may dare to say. But you can say they are of high risk to council and of course the country as well. Will you agree with that?
Exactly.
And so you called the individual, cutting, the director of planning to your office and you discussed this issue. Did you take any formal steps to address this issue?
That's, as I said earlier, I said these were some of the findings that we submitted to the audit for, National Audit for Collaboration so that we can take the necessary step.
When you say collaboration, what do you mean? Can you elaborate more on what you mean by you submitted to the National Audit Report for Collaboration?
One of it is to find out whether the money spent on it and the money provided by the EU funding are the same money spent on the same project.
Alright?
Yeah, one of it is to collaborate. That means the last money might not have been the money spent, it might be money used by somebody else. So we are not only looking at the project being properly executed, but we are also looking at the possibility of that fund being a disguise fund going through that project but not actually meant for that project.
Very well.
So those are the kind of things we were trying to work on to collaborate.
No, great points that you raise, but this communication to the National Audit, do you have that?
Yes, there was a request we made when we received those queries. We sent them with documents to the National Audit to look into.
Yes, that's what I'm saying, were these requests made formally?
Yeah, it was made formally.
Can you provide the commission with those records of correspondence to the National Audit?
Okay.
But again, aside from the issues that you have raised in relation to your queries, there are other issues that are not disputed in relation to this particular issue. The issue that perhaps you can say a contract been awarded to the director of planning, who's of course a staff or a member of BCC, which you and I will agree that is wrong. The GPPA procurement act was not followed. The contract in itself, the execution of the contract was not anywhere near completion. And these are already proven evidence that you can act on, that has already been clarified, the issue of conflict of interest being raised. So we will expect perhaps that you would have taken drastic action in relation to these issues.
As I said earlier, in this particular area, the ministry has not done well in terms of executing that oversight role in terms of taking the matter to the police or other things. We have not done that until recently. We started, that started with Basay Area Council and going forward, that will be the practice.
Good. I will also now move on to P thirty-four, another very important issue that was being highlighted as well with respect to the same subject, BCC. That there was procurement made at the tune of thirteen million, thirty-nine thousand, eight hundred and fifty dalasas for the purchase of three thousand trash beans without adhering to the above GPPA Act. A single invoice was provided as evidence of supporting documents. Again, these are verbatim from the audit report. And is this to your knowledge at any time?
Exactly.
What is your reaction to that?
Yes, I think this is a similar situation just like the construction, the money paid to cutting. In this case also, we were made to understand that the EU project purchased these beans and also a contract was given to somebody to supply. However, a vendor at the time had problem with BCC and approached us for BCC not acting on her invoice to pay. So we said this particular process has not come through us. We didn't know that BCC has contracted you to produce these things. So in that case, we cannot urge BCC to pay you or not because the actual process has not actually come through the ministry for approval. However, we could not also confirm whether these beans are also the same beans being purchased by the EU funding. So that was also an important thing to be confirmed.
Yes, again, my point is, who is it for? I mean, the responsibility to make sure that they establish that actually this is the position? Is it not what you raised in the data, is it not for BCC to provide evidence of their assertion? As opposed to you trying to struggle for evidence to confirm certain issues?
It's not a matter of struggling, if you know that.
No, I am trying to help you here. What I'm saying is, you are saying you cannot confirm.
Yes.
But you can only confirm if you have adequate information or adequate documentation to that effect. Can, is that not the case?
Yes.
So have they done that? Have they given you the required documentation or the required information to make sure you ascertain whether the right funding or the right expenditure so on and so forth?
No, that one has not been sought. But then it is supposed to be our responsibility to verify that. And then we at the time tried to find out through our own means or not actually from the BCC, to find out whether these things were part of their EU project.
Very well, we will move again to other issues. I will not bore you with all the findings because there are so many fraudulent misrepresentation of funds here and there, financial malpractice that has been highlighted in various area councils. And so we will spend the entire day here. But then the reason why I'm highlighting some of these key, important or serious malpractice is to make sure that, to know as well whether your institution, what you have done, whether this is to your knowledge, what you have done about it and what can be done about it, you understand? Another issue is the non-compliance of disposal procedure where perhaps vehicles or certain material item or equipment were perhaps marked as to be disposed of, but they did not follow the guidelines as per the financial manual, are you aware of any?
Yes, these are like council assets, asset disposals. Like the contract committee or the disposal committee must be in place to look at these assets and then attach values for them. And then they will then put this on an auction or, yeah, auction for people to compete and then people will buy them knowing that the minimum price they are expecting. That is normally the disposal process. Or the, of the assets that even be disposed by donating them to another. Or the, some of the assets that even be disposed by donating them to another institution or body that needed. But then it will be recorded as being transferred to that particular institution and the value will also be noted.
Exactly, and this is the point. There is of course numerous instances wherein this had been the norm at BCC as well. And then we cannot over-discuss the implication of that. The trying to undervalue, perhaps the risk of undervaluing or perhaps overstating the risk of maybe fraudulent malpractice happening in relation to not following the guidelines as per the financial manual.
Exactly.
Yes, and the problem I keep on having is that all these issues are very, very serious issues which definitely again is a recipe for fraud, I hope you're aware of this. These things should be addressed at the moment they are being discovered. Either by your inspection team at any stage or when the audit report highlighted these issues, that actions must be taken. And I'm glad that you've agreed that in most of these instances, there are no actions being taken.
Exactly.
Again, there were spendings being made, expenditures being done and then they do not confirm with the budget, they were not budgeted for. The auditor highlighted these issues as well. Payments being made up to the tune of two hundred thousand dollars to individuals when these issues were not also being budgeted for. What is your knowledge about that?
Yes, this has also been the instances where councils will spend outside their budget. However, during the budget execution, if an unexpected activity comes, council have laid out procedures to follow, to make sure that this particular activity is captured. But then they have to know which of the other activities they're going to cancel or whether they have during the course of the year an excess in terms of revenue based on their revenue projection. They have got an excess and as such that excess should be able to take care of this particular project. And this should go through a council approval process where a resolution will be passed, where the CEO will come to the council to explain that this is a project that is outside the budget. But then I have excess revenue from A, B and C, which was not part of our revenue or we have made revenue collection beyond our expectation. As such, the excess revenue is what I intend to use this. Though that one is a process and if that is done, our projects outside the budget can be executed. However, all the ones that have been flagged by the auditors are normally they don't follow this process. They are just issues that come. The CEOs sometimes unofficially you ask them, why are you doing this kind of spending? They say, no, the council forced it on us. But then we always say you cannot be dictated because you are going to be the person who is going to be answerable to these actions. And some of these things, we've noticed them when they come in the audit report. Or sometimes the inspectors will flag some of these things and then we will call the council concern to discuss it and then for actions to be taken and then those actions to be avoided.
Now, just to discuss how serious this issue is. For example, there were various payments being made. One one was made in twenty twenty to Mwamusa Jaju, security commissioner. He was paid two hundred and thirteen thousand, six hundred and thirty dollars for commission on services. Another payment was made to Ajafatu Nyang, chief cashier in twenty twenty.
Are we still at BCC?
Yes.
Okay.
And commission was paid to the tune of two thousand dollars on commission on services. Another was paid for about forty thousand dollars. Another one was paid Ajafatu Nyang, chief cashier, one hundred and thirty-eight thousand, one hundred and sixty-six dollars. And the reason for the payment was commission on services. Now, this would be okay if you follow the right procedure and payments have been made lawfully and legally, for example. But if the auditor cannot, you'll agree with me of course, cannot detect as to the reasons as to why payments have been made, for example, that is a serious concern. And that is exactly the issue raised by the auditor. For example, there are no supporting documents presented to the auditor to kind of ascertain those payments. And he has highlighted that the payment of these payments, for example, cannot be asserted that in the absence of supporting documents, there is the risk that the payment is not genuine at all. So various payments being made outside the budget and no proper detail or documentation being provided to support those payments. And even the auditor cannot ascertain whether those payments are genuine. How serious do you think this is?
It is a serious, it is a way of people sometimes just rewarding other people on payments that are not attached to any sort of assignment. Because if it is, allowance is paid of that nature, I think we should be able to know what kind of service or what kind of assignment they were assigned to do that was accomplished together. Like in the government, you can pay to a staff an amount up to thirty thousand for what we call special assignment. Where you assign somebody on a special assignment, you can pay this amount. But then that would have been identify what kind of service, what kind of special assignment you've assigned the person to do. But in this case, we have not seen some of those assignments. And then we also don't know, apart from their routine work, what extra work they have done. So payment to them could only be seen as maybe helping to reward somebody, which is in itself a fraud.
Trust me, we can be here for the whole day discussing some of these very, very serious issues being raised by various audit reports. And again, maybe one or two or three before we go on for a break. We have unused softwares. Unused softwares wherein council will perhaps pay for services and perhaps not use them. Maybe they don't need them. If the auditor has highlighted that clearly, that page sixty-one of the same report, where it was highlighted that we found out two unused softwares, namely integrated HR and payroll software and QuickBooks accounting software. The city council purchased this since twenty nineteen. And if you look at the details, the payment was made in twenty nineteen to QuickBooks, to BK Consulting, to the tune of two hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars. Another payment was paid to Kubey Jara for an integrated HR and payroll system, two hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars. But is it because they don't need these systems? Or is it that it's a lot of fraudulent scheme? Or is it that it was just lack of proper adherence to rules and regulation as laid down? But then it has been highlighted, it is a high risk as highlighted by the auditor. And the risk is that the money wasted on purchasing these softwares could have been used to fund other activities beneficial to the public. I will say, he's in fact being very nice. Is it an issue of awarding contracts to companies or individuals knowing you don't need that particular service? But they still paid for those services just to have benefit perhaps as well.
I would say the councils need all these services. But the checks and balance in these services after realizing that the councils don't want to use them because it has controls in your spending, transparency in the spending. And as such, they were abandoned. Even if this system introduced in the councils is facing a similar system because it will tell you where to spend based on your budget, within your budget. It will tell you how the process should go because if not, it will not allow you to go. So these controls and the checks and transparency in those system is what led to the abandoning of those systems.
Very well. Just to round up on these issues, the issue of loans. You have unpaid loans as well. Loans given to staff that are no longer working for the area council and they have not been recovered. You also have a loan paid to two women for the purpose of performing a hack or going to Mecca, basically. And I'm not sure whether it was budgeted for, it was never paid. I'm not sure whether you are aware of these instances that are happening at the council wherein council can just decide to be giving loans here and there back and forth and there are no recovery procedures or guidelines to be followed in relation to making sure that the finances of the area councils, the finance of the country in essence, is not being wasted.
Yes, we are aware of this, that at some point council give out loan and some people will start paying and they will stop. Sometimes they will not even pay at all. And that these were flagged in the audit reports, yes.
Now, again, lawyers will say finally, finally. I hope you're aware, for most of these issues being raised by the auditor and in fact some of these issues, I believe if your institution is performing a very effective inspection mechanism in relation to its oversight function, that most of these issues should have been detected earlier and perhaps dealt with adequately. Do you agree with that?
Yes, so.
Now, what are the mechanisms in place now? Since there are perhaps no robust mechanisms previously, what are the mechanisms in place now that you can tell us that are supposed to address some of these very serious malpractices or possible malpractices that are happening in the various area councils?
Yes, we have the enforcement. It's just a matter of enforcing what exists. That is, the audit report can be, the inspection reports as they come if they have issues concerning some of this audit report. The inspectors can check and then confirm and then the matters will be addressed if the management and the council as a body have not addressed the issue. And equally, the issue can be addressed through other means like sending them for police for investigation and also possible arrest and then recovery of some of those funds. This going forward is the approach of the ministry. That means we have to stick to enforcement. That is the basic underlying word.
Exactly, because just as simple as not having council meetings being recorded, for example. Just as simple as that. It can look very simple without having an efficient clerk or having a clerk who record. Even I was even surprised in the BCC or other area councils wherein you don't even have minutes of sessions being recorded and so on and so forth. These are very fundamental issues.
Exactly.
Yes, and again, thank you very much for your time. I will hand over to you, to the chairperson. I'm sure we will be good enough for a break, if any.
Thank you, council. I would ask the commissioners if they have questions for clarification to proceed to do so. Okay, Mr. Jaina?
Thank you very much, Madam Chairperson. Do councils have manuals, financial manuals, administrative manuals as to how they should perform their duties? And the CEO, is he the custodian for some of these manuals so that when things pop up, he or she will be able to make reference and do what is supposedly the right thing based on the manuals?
Yes.
Have these manuals been lodged or copied, been lodged to your ministry or at your ministry?
Yes.
Coming back to the financial bit of it. We have just had in evidence that some councils spend outside of the budget. And in cases where they are spending outside of the budget, it means authority must be given for that to happen. Or if you are taking from another budget line to another budget line, there must be a vehement. Who authorizes those vehement or who authorizes those budgets to be spent?
Is the council as a body? That means if it is going to be a vehement, the council most of, council will identify the particular activity that they intend to do instead of another activity where they want to wire from. And if it is a new activity that has not been budgeted, as I explained earlier, the CEO as the financial officer, vote controller must be able to bring to the council meeting, one, the importance of the new activity as an emergency activity that it should be taken care of. And two, where is this fund coming from to finance that particular activity? And once those are being provided, either, as I said earlier, this is going to be an excess revenue that he has already identified or they're going to forego one or two other activities to be able to execute this activity. He should be able to put this argument down to convince the council that this is what he intend to do and he's taking the fund from here and the fund is there already, is going to be moved from here to there. Then once the council approves that, then that activity can now be executed as council becomes the authority to authorize them to do that.
I think this is the convenient point to stop for us to take our break. And we will resume at two thirty after our lunch break. And I believe that we will continue on the evidence that you are giving. And hopefully, we would conclude with you today, but we have a lot of issues because if you look at the general powers of the councils, this is where I want you to come in and highlight, but we will release you today because we have other witness that we have scheduled for tomorrow. When we are done, we will call you because we want you to highlight more on what the ministry have done in assisting the councils in the execution of their general powers. Because these general powers, if you look at what is contained in the provisions, you will realize that the ministry should support these councils in the execution of their general powers. So that is what I want us to look at after the examination from the councils for you to give more light and shed more light as to the responsibility of the ministry and where you have gone wrong in supporting these councils. Thank you so much, we can now rise.